Okay, good evening. Can be up the agenda?
Sure do. All right, let me just share my screen. That's not it. I had it right here. I'll pull it up again. And get rid of this box.
Okay, can I get a motion to call tonight's special board meeting to order?
Motion.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we'll do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did we get any comments for the first public comment session? Okay, no public comments, thank you. Okay, superintendent's report.
I just want to share with the board very briefly. I know that a lot of folks have heard things coming out of the Board of Regents. They had a meeting on Monday and Tuesday. This presentation will put up on the website so that anyone watching tonight, I did share it with staff earlier today, again, just a brief summary of the changes. So, back in February, which I spelled, the US Department of Ed, let me back this up. Back in February, NICE Ed submitted a formal request to the USDA to waive state testing requirements in all levels. This waiver was initially denied, but granted, all testing for spring and summer would be, if it was granted, they would. Boy, I'm having a tough time with my own presentation here. The waiver was denied. They reapplied. If it is granted, it would waive all assessments for the spring and summer. But if it's not granted, and that's what we're anticipating, this is what we are looking at for our assessments. So, the Regents exams are still required for federal accountability, for ESSA accountability. And what the Board of Regents have ruled is that school districts have to administer Algebra I, ELA, Living Environment, or Science. But there's going to be no Regents exams in August. This is really critical. Examinations are not going to count for the student. They're not going to use them for accountability. And they can't be used towards if the child earns credit for the class, meaning we are looking at these exams as an opportunity to be able to see where our students are, where their gaps are, and where they are on their grade level, their grade level standard. So, these tests are just purely for the purpose of like benchmarking and seeing where our learning loss might be.
I'd like to ask a question about that. If a person, if they pass the Regents exam, could that supersede failing the courses for the teacher failing for the year?
No, it cannot. We cannot use them per the Board of Regents. It's purely diagnostic to see where they are against their grade level standards, but it can't be used to determine for course credit.
I kind of thought that's what it was, but I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, that's a great question, Mr. McManus. Great question.
Can I have a question too? Aren't there a number of Regents exams that a student has to pass to graduate with certain types of diplomas?
Yep, and as I'm going to go through this presentation, the way it's going to work is very similar to the way it worked last spring where they're exempt. So, within our system, if they were slated to take that Regents exam, they get an exemption from it. So, they continue to stay on track to graduate.
So, this is just- I'm sorry, just to clarify, this only really then impacts the district in terms of accountability of any kind. They're using these scores to assess the district's progress.
No, actually, they're not. So, if I can go back, let me see if I can figure out how to go back a slide. All right, these assessments are for the ESSA federal accountability, but they are not going to count for the students. I understand where you're feeling confused. But the United States Department of Education said it's not, they will not be used to determine, you know, if we're on the list or off the list. They're purely diagnostic both at the federal level as well as the state level. And they can't be, like Mr. McManus's question, it can't be used to determine if they get course credit or if they've passed the course for the year. So, it can't be included. So, that's a great question, Andrea. So, you see the word federal accountability and you think, oh, wait, they're still going to use it? They're not. The USDA has said it's purely diagnostic for them as well to see where their learning loss is nationwide. Does that make sense? Here is the question about exemptions that you had about staying on track for graduating. I'm not going to read it to you again. This is going to be available to everyone down the road. We'll put it on the website. So, the nuts and bolts of this slide is basically what I've already said, that if they were slated to take it, or it is a class that usually ends in a Regents, they will receive an exemption for it and stay on track, even if they are in eighth grade taking an accelerated class. The labs, so there's a waiver within the science lab. The big thing is they still have to get their minutes in, but it can be a combination of hands-on and virtual. So, our science teachers are using a platform called Gizmos where it's labs, virtual labs. So, between the virtual labs and anything hands-on will be considered acceptable. This was a big question a lot of people had, and I'm glad we got clarification about mastery and honors. So, a lot of our students try to shoot for a mastery or honors Regents diploma. In lieu of not having these Regents exams last year and this year, we can use, course grades can be substituted for those Regents exams. So, if a student has been getting a 90 all along and ends the year with a 90, we can substitute that for the Regents exam, the final rate. So, that's great news. It needs to be noted, and I'm putting it out here, and I don't want to confuse anybody, so please, please let me know if you have questions on this. It's really critical that parents know that they have the right to decline any of these Regents exemptions. Well, most parents are probably saying, well, why would I do that? We know that we have families out there that their children, students with disabilities, and based on IDEA, they can stay in school until they're 21. We're not pushing those children out. If the parents want them to continue to stay in school until they're 21 and not exempt them so that they have to be done at 18, they have a right. And they have the option to decline up to 30 days before. So, again, it is, we have to notify families that they have that parental right, that if they want to decline the exemptions. Because, and rightfully so, we don't, you know, across the state and across the country, we don't want districts to push children out until they're ready. So, we will, as we get closer, we will make sure we notify those parents that they do have that right. In most cases, it's children who have significant disabilities that their parents want them to stay till they're 21. Three through eight assessments, they have condensed it down, the ELA and math and science to one day, part one. This is interesting. I don't think most people, and we're going to start an avid campaign about this. Part one is just multiple choice. There is no written response in ELA. And I combed through some old exams. The grade three ELA is 15 or less questions. So, it will take probably a child no more than a half an hour, and math is usually under 25 questions. So, it's part one only, and it's almost like if we were doing a district benchmark assessment, it's just a few questions gauging to see where they fall against their grade level standards. Purely diagnostic like the Regents exams. This is going to be a phenomenal tool for us as a district when the students take these exams, three through eight, so that when we're planning for the fall, we know what supports that we have to give our students. Do we need to reallocate staff or AIS? Do we need to reallocate other academic interventions? So, I encourage all families to participate in the three through eight assessments, even if your child is fully remote. We can make arrangements so that they come in in a safe environment that follows all protocols so that they can take this, it's again, not a grueling test whatsoever. You can look yourself on NICE Ed website for old assessments. Part one is very short. It's just multiple choice on the ELA. There's going to be no field tests. And part two, that students normally would take, districts are still going to get it, and we can use it for academics, like as lessons or samples. And we have a whole window. So, that's why if someone is fully remote and a parent wants to make arrangements for the child to come get it, there's windows at time. Let me see if I can make this go. I think that's it. Is there any questions? Nancy, it was eight slides.
Red, did you have a question? Oh, you muted.
I noticed it was eight slides, by the way.
Red, you're muted.
Muted Red.
I don't think you-
I like that.
There you go.
That was good. I don't know what's going on with my mute. Maybe it's my wife doing it. She just wasn't there.
Do you have a question for me?
Hey, nay, nay, nay.
Okay, I'll actually go back. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. So, my only question is just, you know, we were looking at data at the last meeting. I think it's probably good news that, you know, the test scores for the kids are waived. But we'll still use that when we say benchmarking, not just for next year, but to remediate for some of the gaps this year. Because it can follow the kid if they don't get through all the material, or they don't have a good handle on the material, or all the material that should have been covered this year, so it doesn't follow them next year.
And I also know, and this is, it's fine to say in an open session, we're looking at right now about hosting summer-
Okay, good evening. Kim be up the agenda?
Sure do. Alright, let me just share my screen. That's not it. I had it right here. I'll pull it up again.
Okay, can I get a motion to call tonight's special board meeting to order?
Motion.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we'll do the, we'll do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United-
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible-
With liberty-
Liberty and justice for all. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did we get any comments for the first public comment session? Okay, no public comments, thank you. Okay, superintendent's report.
I just want to share with the board very briefly. I know that a lot of folks have heard things coming out of the Board of Regents. They had a meeting on Monday and Tuesday. This presentation will put up on the website so that anyone watching tonight, I did share it with staff earlier today. Again, just a brief summary of the changes. So, back in February, which I spelled, you had the US Department of Ed. Let me back this up. Back in February, NICE Ed submitted a formal request to the USDE to waive state testing requirements in all levels. This waiver was initially denied, but granted, all testing for spring and summer would be, if it was granted, they would. Boy, I'm having a tough time with that on presentation here. The waiver was denied. They reapplied. If it is granted, it would waive all assessments for the spring and summer. But if it's not granted, and that's what we're anticipating, this is what we are looking at for our assessments. So, the Regents exams are still required for federal accountability, for ESA accountability. And what the Board of Regents have ruled is that school districts have to administer Algebra I, ELA, Living Environment, or Science. But there's going to be no Regents exams in August. This is, this is really critical. Examinations are not going to count for the student. They're not going to use them for accountability, and they can't be used towards if the child earns credit for the class, meaning we are looking at these exams as an opportunity to be able to see where our students are, where their gaps are, and where they are on their grade level, their grade level standards. So, these tests are just purely for the purpose of like benchmarking and seeing where our learning loss might be. Not gonna-
I'd like to ask a question about that. If a person, if they pass the Regents exam, could that supersede failing the courses for the teacher failing for the year?
No, it cannot. We cannot use them per the Board of Regents. It's purely diagnostic to see where they are against their grade level standards, but it can't be used to determine for course credit.
I kind of thought that's what it was, but I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, that's a great question, Mr. McManus. Great question.
Can I have a question too? Aren't there a number of Regents exams that a student has to pass to graduate with certain types of, certain types of diplomas?
Yep, and as I'm going to go through this presentation, the way it's going to work is very similar to the way it worked last spring where they're exempt. So, within our system, if they were slated to take that Regents exam, they get an exemption from it. So, they continue to stay on track to graduate. So, this is-
I'm sorry, just, just to clarify, this only really then impacts the district in terms of accountability of any kind. They're, they're using these scores to assess the district's progress.
No, actually, they're not. So, I'm gonna, if I can go back, let me see if I can figure out how to go back a slide. Alright. These, these assessments are for the FED, ESA, federal accountability. But they are not, they're not going to count for the students. I understand where you're feeling confused. But the United States Department of Education said it's not, they will not be used to determine, you know, if, if we're on the list or off the list. They're purely diagnostic both at the federal level as well as the state level. And they can't be, like Mr. McManus's question, it can't be used to determine if they get course credit or if they've passed the course for the year. So, it can't be, can't be included. So, that's a great question, Andrea. So, you see the word federal accountability and you think, oh, wait, they're still going to use it? They're not. The USDA has said it's purely diagnostic for them as well to see where the learning loss is nationwide. Does that make sense? Here is the question about exemptions that you had about staying on track for graduating. I'm not going to read it to you. Again, this is going to be available to everyone down the road. I mean, we'll put it on the website. So, the nuts and bolts of this slide is, is basically what I've already said, that if they were slated to take it or it is a class that usually ends in a Regents, they will receive an exemption for it and stay on track, even if they are in eighth grade taking an accelerated class. The labs, so there's a waiver within the science lab. The big thing is, is they still have to get their minutes in, but it can be a combination of hands-on and virtual. So, our science teachers are using a platform called Gizmos, where it's labs, virtual labs. So, between the virtual labs and anything hand, hands-on will, will be considered acceptable. This was a big question a lot of people had, and I'm glad we got clarification about mastery and honors. So, a lot of our students try to shoot for a mastery or honors Regents diploma. In lieu of not having these Regents exams last year and this year, we can use, course grades can be substituted for those Regents exams. So, if a student has been getting a 90 all along and ends the year with a 90, we can substitute that for the Regents exam. The final, the final rate. So, that's great news. It needs to be noted, and I'm putting it out here, and I don't want to confuse anybody, so please, please let me know if you have questions on this. It's really critical that parents know that they can have, they have the right to decline any of these Regents exemptions. Well, most parents are probably saying, well, why would I do that? We know that we have families out there that their children, students with disabilities, and based on IDEA, they can stay in school until they're 21. We're not pushing those children out. If the parents want them to continue to stay in school until they're 21 and not exempt them so that they, they have to be done at 18, they have a right, and they have the option to decline up to 30 days before. So, again, it is a, you know, we have to notify families that they have that parental right, that if they want to decline the exemptions. Because, and rightfully so, we don't, you know, across the state and across the country, we don't want districts to push children out until they're ready. So, we will, as we get closer, we will make sure we notify those parents that they do have that right. In most cases, it's children who have significant disabilities that their parents want them to stay till they're 21. Three through eight assessments, they have condensed it down, the ELA and math and science to one day, part one. This is interesting. I don't think most people, and we're going to start an avid campaign about this. Part one is just the multiple choice. There is no written response in ELA. And I combed through some old exams. The grade three ELA is 15 or less questions. So, it will take probably a child no more than a half an hour, and math is usually under 25 questions. So, it's part one only, and it's almost like if we were doing a district benchmark assessment. It's just a few questions gauging to see where they fall against their grade level standards. Purely diagnostic like the Regents exams. This is going to be a phenomenal tool for, for us as a district that when the students take these exams three through eight, so that when we're planning for the fall, we know what supports that we have to give our, our students. Do we need to reallocate staff or AIS? Do we need to reallocate other academic intervention? So, I encourage all families to, to participate in the three through eight assessments. Even if your child is fully remote, we can make arrangements so that they come in, in a safe environment that follows all protocols so that they can take this, it's again, not a grueling test whatsoever. You can look yourself on NICE Ed website for old assessments. Part one is very short. It's just multiple choice on, on, on the ELA. There's going to be no field tests. And part two, that students normally would take, districts are still going to get it, and we can use it for, for academics, like as lessons or samples. And we have a whole window. So, that's why if someone is fully remote and a parent wants to make arrangements for the child to come get it, there's windows at time. Let me see if I can make this go. And I think that's it. Is there any questions? Nancy, it was eight slides.
Red, did you have a question? Oh, you muted.
I noticed it was eight slides, by the way.
Red, you're muted.
Muted, Red.
I don't think you-
I like-
Good, there you go.
That was, I don't know what's going on with my mute. Maybe it's my wife doing it. I don't, she just wasn't there.
Do you have a question for me?
Hey, hey, hey.
Okay, I'll actually go back. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. So, my only question is just, you know, we were looking at data at the last meeting. I think it's probably good news that, you know, the, the test scores for the kids are waived, but we'll still use that when we say benchmarking, not just for next year, but to remediate for some of the gaps this year. Because it kind of can, it can follow the kid if they don't get through all the material, or they don't have a good handle on the material or all the material that should have been covered this year, so it doesn't follow them next year.
And I also know, and this is, it's fine to say in an open session, we're looking at right now about hosting summer programming for our students, both credit recovery and enrichment. And having this tool will be so critical that we could literally pinpoint by standard where a student may have, have a gap and target that over summer program, programming. So, I encourage all parents, especially since it's really a brief assessment. We want our children to try, but it's, it's a great tool for us to use for, you know, if, if we can make summer programming happen and especially in the fall as well.
Great, thank you.
Alright, so I'll pull the agenda back up again, Andrea.
We have to get the parents on board.
Absolutely, right? We definitely want to get the parents on board. Hopefully by the April meeting, and then what, you know, sometimes in April, we can frame it for everyone exactly what type of academic interventions we're doing for the remainder of this school year, and then as well as over the summer. We've got some really great things in the hopper that we're excited about, and I can't wait to be able to share it with everyone, not just the board, but the community as a whole. Okay. So, that's it.
Great. Well, thank you.
Well, we got, I got a question. I got, I have a question for Kim. Because it was asked by, by somebody to me, and I didn't know quite the answer. Now, in their question, they said that Albany School District got millions of dollars in the stimulus package. And he asked me, how much did Green Island get? And I, I couldn't answer the question. Can you answer the question?
I can. So, we received today a tentative, right? They're not sure. Senator Schumer's office put something out about the rescue stimulus money. We're slated for a little over $700,000. The, the concern is, and, and the fiscal responsible thing to do is that we would like that money to be identified not as aid, but as a grant so that we can spread it out over a period of like four years. If we get a lump sum that is considered aid, it is going to, and not just, and I had a discussion about this today. I had a Capital Region BOC's meeting today, that the fiscal impact would be devastating to every district. So, if we have that money and, and it's just one shot, what's going to happen after the 21, 22 school year, and we can't spread that money out, we, every district in the Capital Region will be looking at significant, significant layoffs because that stimulus money won't be there to support it, right? So, if someone gives you, you know, gave you a million dollars right now, Mr. McManus, and you went out and spent it all, and you bought a big, beautiful house, how are you going to pay for the taxes in two years from now, right? So, just think of it that way. So, we are lobbying, as you know, I'm on the Legislative Committee. We are lobbying to be able to spread that money out over a period of four years, so we don't fall off this fiscal cliff in the 22, 23 school year. And then we can allocate so much each year to address learning loss and address the interventions that we need to do. But that, again, that number is just tentative. I want to make sure I'm very clear. Senator Schumer's office said this is, this is not etched in stone yet.
I totally understand that, and that's the way to go. You're right.
We want to make sure that we don't just think about the immediate year coming up, my job, that's why, you know, we had BPD do a long-range analysis. I, I think five and 10 years from now, and that's my, that's my duty, right? To make sure that the district is fiscally healthy, not just, you know, the immediate year, but several years down the road.
Thank you. That, I needed that explanation. Thank you.
You're welcome. It just, it literally came out today, so I'm glad you asked.
Okay, so we have some action items. Is that it, Kim? Those two?
That's it. Now, 401, 2, 4-
404. 404.
404. Okay, can I get a motion to approve action items 4.01 through 4.04?
Motion.
Second.
Anybody have any comments or concerns? There we get a chance to see the attachment. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Just, you know, Andrea, for anyone who is out there listening and they're unsure, I know the boards had an opportunity to look at the document, and I know the Teachers Union has. So, the state came out with back in late December, early January, that districts basically had to take their reopening plan and their safe school plan and come up with a pandemic plan. And we have to submit it to the state by April 1st. And, and so the Safe Schools team plus, plus myself, Mr. Carwiel and some custodians, we kind of came together to develop this plan, and it were required for the Teachers Union to review it. They didn't have to vote on it, and then the board has to approve it, and I have to submit it by April 1st. So, if you're to look at it, it kind of looks like it's weaving those two plans together.
Hey, do you think I'm in for the second public comment? No new comments, thank you. Okay, we do have executive session tonight. Kim, is this personnel?
Personnel, yes.
Personnel matters. We won't take any further action when we come back out, just to adjourn. Okay. Alright, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Grawley for tech. Are we out? We need a motion to go into executive.
Okay, motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye.